Let's meet into order, please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you very much, you can be seated. First up on the agenda is approval of the agenda, I will move that.
Second.
All right, motion by Bintenger, second by Carper, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Next up is the consent agenda, items two through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Number two is approval of the minutes of the June tenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Number three is approval of claims. Number four from county treasurer Tina Bertrand, A is approval of resolution approving abatement of taxes for R-Y. B is approval of resolution approving abatement of taxes for yes Home Sales Experience LLC. And number C is approval of resolution approving abatement for taxes for DH. Number five from county auditor Michelle Scaff, approval of liquor license for application for Abu Becker Shrine Sergeant Beluff Iowa. Number six from human resources Melissa Thomas, item A is approval of men random of personnel transactions. And B is authorization to initiate hiring process. And lastly, number seven from board administration Ryan Erickson, approval to reallocate fiscal year twenty-five WCICC CIP funds. And with that, I will move that.
Second.
Motion by Bintenger, second by Nelson, all right, any discussion, changes, all right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. All right, well, we are not at our, we're not yet at our set time, four thirty-five. So let's go down to item eleven from human resources Melissa Thomas. It's approval to raise the health fund employee contribution rates effective July first, two thousand twenty-five.
Melissa Thomas, human resources director, and this agenda item is basically requesting to increase the family per month contribution forty dollars and the single contribution by twenty dollars. Now, last Wednesday, Governor signed the Senate file three eighty-three into law regarding our pharmacy benefit manager. This law, one of the provisions was for each script that is dispensed, there is a ten dollar and sixty-eight fee. Now, to put that in perspective, last year, our plan filled over thirteen thousand prescriptions. So there is other parts of this bill that will also increase our cost. They're changing the way pharmacy rebates are allocated and also they're prohibiting plan designs that can control prescription cost. So to help these costs in the future, we're also looking at a RFP for our pharmacy benefit manager and to see what they can do for us in the future and if our contract is good for now or if we need to change it January one. So I am asking for the increases that are in the backup. Also, if during the motion, if you would add July first as the effective date, two thousand twenty-five. Any questions?
All right, any questions by the board?
Melissa, we had to add money into the the health fund. This year is is twenty, is a twenty dollar and a forty dollar increase enough?
Well, I think it will be enough until January one. I'm not real sure, as I mentioned with the RFP, what our plan, you know, if it will change or not at that time. But until then, I think this will be enough to cover that.
So in January one, we might have to come back and do this again, is what?
I I am, I really, I really can't say and, you know, asking our consultants on this matter as well. They're still diving into this law and figuring out how it will affect all of the cost of the self-funding throughout the state of Iowa. So it's really hard to say, you know, what it will, what will happen in the future.
Any further questions? If not, I will, I'll move to approve the raise the health fund, the employee contribution rates effective July first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All right, motion by Bintenger, second by Nelson, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. It's four thirty-five, that brings us to our four thirty-five P M. set time. Number eight from board administration Heather Lynn Sickel, today is the public hearing sale property parcel ending in zero 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 one, AKA seventeen twenty-four Witcher Avenue. With that, we will open up the public hearing. If you would like to bid on this property, please come forward and state your name and opening bid. And I don't have my computer in front of me because it's down right now, we're having some issues, what is that opening bid? Is it, was it, do you have it in the backup right there?
Three eighty-four.
Three eighty-four, thank you, I was gonna say three eighty, but it didn't sound right, thank you, Mark.
Look who saved the day, Karen.
Opening, opening bid is three eighty-four.
Eric Thomas, I'd like to take that bid for three eighty-four.
Okay, you said Eric Thomas?
Eric Thomas.
Thomas, thanks, sir. All right.
Dan, did I miss it, did we close the public hearing prior to the bidding?
No, no, we need to do that, sorry.
I moved to close public hearing.
All right, second that, motion by Nelson, second by Bintenger to close the public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero, thank you, Joshua. All right, so we have Eric Thomas, opening bid three eighty-four.
Hi, Scott Muggenburgh, four hundred.
Okay. All right. All right. Current bid's at four hundred. If you want to bid again, just come up to the mic. Four hundred.
Four fifty.
Okay.
Seven fifty.
Any other bids? All right, hearing none, all right, sir, can you say your name again, was it?
Scott Muggenburgh.
All right, I'll move to approve for to sell for hundred and seventy-five dollars to Scott Muggenburgh for a property parcel ending zero zero one, AKA seventeen twenty-four Witcher Avenue.
Second.
All right, motion by Bintenger, second by Nelson, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, everyone for coming out, please see Karen back there, sir, and she'll be able to help you with that. All right.
Lot of steps.
All right, it's four thirty-eight, so we still have a couple minutes before four forty P M. set time. With that, let's go to number twelve from board administration, Ryan Erickson. And Ryan, letter A is approval of appropriation resolution for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, I'll let you comment on those.
This is a slightly different format than it was in previous years. I checked with the Department of Management and Dennis always had it broken down, you know, by function. But I looking at other counties, they did it at the department level, so that's how I presented it this year. I think it's a little less confusing than the way Dennis had it. So this is the resolution for, you know, the each office slash department and the amount that the budget has been, you know, authorized for each of them to spend. If they go above this amount, if they are, the service area is not, I will say, going over, then there's no amendment required, but the the office, our department should come to the board and request more additional funding.
Okay. All right.
I'll move it.
I just have one question of of Joshua, should the auditor be attesting to all resolutions and be listed to sign?
It's a good practice to have the auditor on there for attestation.
Okay, would it be okay if these are approved and they're just regenerated with for the auditor's signature and the board members can sign next week?
That's acceptable.
Okay, all right, good enough, thank you, Michelle. All right, so with that, I'll move approve of appropriation resolution for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
All right, motion by Bintenger, second by Nelson, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. With that, we'll come back to item twelve, that brings us to our four forty P M. set time. From planning zoning, Daniel Priestley, item A is to conduct second public hearing on the zoning ordinance map amendment rezone for agricultural preservation A P to the general industrial G I zoning district on parcel ending in one zero one two for New Cooperative Inc. With that, we'll open the public hearing, or do you want to speak first, Dan?
Just one opening comment, this is just a continuation, this is the second of three public hearings and readings for New Cooperative to rezone from A P to general industrial.
All right, with that, we'll open the public hearing, if anyone speaks for or against this, please come forward, state your name, and any comments?
Good afternoon again, maybe I'm from the Department of Redundancy Department, but my name is Frank Huesman, representing New Cooperative. Just wanted to thank you for considering the rezoning in Sloan, and I'm here to answer any questions if anyone has any, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Seeing no other comments, I move the public hearing to be closed.
I'll second that, motion by Nelson, second by Bintenger, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. All right, item B is to approve the second reading of the zoning ordinance map amendment rezone, and I will, I'll move that.
Second.
All right, motion by Binger, second by Nelson, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. All right, we're still not at our four forty-five P M. set time. Let's do this, Dan, you want to go ahead and on ten A, every time you get through that, we'll be right at our four forty-five. Item A is to receive the final report zoning commission recommendation for a zoning ordinance text amendment to revise the land use summary table of allowed uses, section three point oh, three point four, to classify borrow pits for earth materials as a conditional use within the agricultural states A E zoning district.
Yes, supervisors, the board, the zoning commission received your directive that you had on April twenty-ninth. They examined this borrow pit issue, looked at it from the practical difficulty that was posed to a lot of our landowners with respect to the agricultural estates existing in areas that are agricultural preservation. They send you their recommendation four to zero vote to recommend approval to change the zoning to allow for a conditional use permit for agricultural estates as zoning districts. So they definitely saw the logic that was put into the direction.
Well, I appreciate the work on that, and I appreciate your work on it, and I think that this is gonna come up, I think they'll have a lot of permits to issue because I think, I think people will, you know, see it as an avenue now, and I think that there's a need for it. And so I'm glad that we're making these changes.
And and if I may add, the reason for the conditional use is there is some practical reasons why neighbors should be notified about a significant amount of fill being removed from an area such as side dumps coming in and removing and knowing where haul routes are, where that's, where it's being transferred across the county and things. So having that check and balance on it fits with the the culture of what the ordinance already is.
Well, and that's how you, yeah, I mean, traffic control, dust control, erosion control, all that goes into that. And, you know, I, there shouldn't be a problem with it being done if it's done right, you know, and so I think that this is a great pathway for that. So again, I appreciate all your work on that, Dan.
All right, thank you, Dan. With that, we're right at a, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, so item B is to conduct the first public hearing on the zoning ordinance text amendment. With that, we'll open that up, if you want to come up to speak for or against that, please come forward and just state your name and any comments regarding this agenda item. All right, seeing none, I will move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Binger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Takes it on to item C, which is to approve the first reading of the zoning ordinance text amendment.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Did, did you receive the final report, may have, ten A, I may have missed the motion for that.
I think we did have a motion for that, yeah.
Yeah, I'll move that to receive.
Second.
Motion by Binger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, I believe we didn't, I believe we did, but it's all right. I believe we did move that, yeah, already. Man, all right, item C is to approve the first reading of the zoning ordinance of the text amendment.
Move it.
All right. Motion by Nelson, just need a second. Second, all right, second by Dietrich, all right, any discussion on that one? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. All right, we are done with number eleven, we're done with twelve A, that was motion and approved, that brings us back to twelve B, which is the approval of resolutions for the inter-fund operating transfers for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, once again, I'll turn that over to Ryan.
Yeah, during the budget cycle, there were several inter-fund transfers and it undermined understanding that each one of them needs to be approved by resolution. And so then I've got a list of them here and we need to go through them one by one. So the first one I have is a transfer from the general supplemental to the general basic for funding the appropriations for matching FICA I P Rs and health insurance to be expended from the general basic fund in the amount of six million, four hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars.
Okay, all right, any questions from the board to write on this one?
Sorry, these are out of order, I need to, which one was that one?
The general base, general supplement to general basic.
In the amount of?
Six million, four hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred fifty-four.
Okay.
All right. I'll move to approve that resolution.
Second.
Motion by Binger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Item C is to prove it'll set the level of fiscal year twenty-six.
Actually, there, there's like seven or eight of these.
Okay, on item, on item B, okay, all right, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, Michelle, I wasn't able to see, because I wasn't able to bring up the, what was in the agenda, so I will try. The next one I have is for the county library.
What's the amount?
Okay, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That is to help the county library pay for their share of the expenses. And that's from rural basic services to the county library fund.
I'll move it.
Second that, motion by Bingers, I mean, motion by Nelson, excuse me, second by Binger, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
The next one is for one million, eight hundred thousand dollars, and that is from rural basic services to secondary roads fund. And that is a, purposes to move taxes levied on township valuations to the secondary road funds to pay their share of the expenses of the secondary roads fund.
I'll move it.
A second, all right, motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
The next one is for seventy-six thousand, five hundred, that is from rural, this one's a new one, rural supplemental fund to the rural basic. And this is to fund appropriations for the matching for FICA, I P Rs, health insurance expended from the rural basic fund in the amount of seventy-six thousand, five hundred.
I'll move it.
A second, all right, motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
The next one is for two hundred thousand even. This one is to transfer sums from the courthouse maintenance fund to the general supplemental fund in the, for the purpose of tax reduction.
I believe this transfer was already made at the time that the board approved it during the budget hearings as well as the pilot transfer in fiscal year twenty-five.
Actually, I don't think I've made it yet.
I I believe that was before you were full force budget director and I had made those transfers.
So then, do we not do this one, then?
I I would table these two, the pilot and this one, until we research that more.
Then I move to table the resolution of moving two hundred thousand dollars from the courthouse maintenance fund to the general supplemental fund as well as tabling the movement to the transfer of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars from the pilot fund to general supplemental fund.
I'll second that. That was twenty-nine thousand, how much was it, twenty-nine?
Nine one five.
Nine one five, okay, thank you.
All right, then the next one is.
We gotta vote on, so, motion by, yeah, Nelson, second by Binger, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
And I'll log that for the first one and the second one, who's the second for the pilot?
For me, yeah, for both of them.
We'll need another vote for that one.
Okay, motion, motion by Nelson, second by Binger, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Right, the next one is for seven hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. That is to move funds from the tax incremental fund to the debt service fund for the paid principal and interest.
I'll move it.
A second, all right, motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
The next one is for one hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred dollars, that is to move sums from the conservation reserve funds or the general basic fund to reimburse the Browns Lake project.
I'll move it.
A second, all right, motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
The next one is three hundred thousand, this is to move funds from the gaming revenue fund to the debt service fund for the purpose of tax reduction.
I'll move that. Second, all right, motion by Binger, second by Dietrich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
The next one, again, is for three hundred thousand, that is to move three hundred thousand from the local option sales tax fund to the debt service fund in the order of to reduce taxation.
I'll move it.
A second, all right, motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
And the last one that I have is for three hundred thousand again, and this one is to move funds from the secondary road fund to the debt service fund to pay twenty-five principal and interest for the fiscal year twenty-two secondary gravel project.
I'll move that, I'll second, all right, motion by Binger, second by Dietrich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
And that's all I have for the inter-fund transfers.
Okay. All right. Then that would be, next up is item C, proof it'll set the level of fiscal year twenty-six, a desired amount from gaming from the four, four two twenty-four, agenda item recommended two hundred thousand, so with that, turn it over to you, Ryan.
Yeah, that, when I was researching this, I just came across this, that in the April board meeting, it was a desire of the board at that time to fund the courthouse maintenance fund. And at that time, they moved two hundred thousand out of gaming, but, and they said that it should be discussed again at an annual basis. So that's why I'm bringing it up is, you know, they just, at that, the board at that time had recommended to continue funding.
Right, okay.
So that's why I'm just bringing it up for a board discussion. And if, you know, you guys decide to, what we have already moved, that two hundred thousand that was approved in, on that April board meeting already has been moved out for the fiscal twenty, you know, budget.
Yeah, I think the idea at the time was to continually fund a maintenance fund for the courthouse that would be alongside general basic reserves, what didn't really cause any harm to do so. But at the same time, if we're gonna have a project, it's not gonna be funded entirely by this, this amount of money. So to me, it doesn't really much matter, it's easier to have it in general basic reserves, but that's just my preference, doesn't matter.
I concur.
Yeah. All right, hearing none, any other discussion on that, or, all right, with that, that'll just, we'll just, hear no motion or second to move any amount over, that will just, that item will die?
The next item, at that time, it was the board said to, at the end of the fiscal year, any unspent funds from the courthouse, you know, from Kenny, the building service budget should be moved over to this courthouse maintenance fund.
Okay. Right, I do, I do remember that, part of, part of the original gen item, so I would, I would, I would move that. All right, second. All right, yeah.
So this is from the remainder of building services budget to the courthouse maintenance fund?
Just in that function, yes, it was for the unspent funds for the courthouse maintenance and building services was sixty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-one cents, this is from fiscal twenty-four. We haven't reached the end of fiscal twenty-five yet, so I don't know what the amount would be for the fiscal twenty-five year. This is just from what I read in the board, that that's what they said, is any unspent funds from that function should be moved over to the courthouse maintenance fund.
So if this isn't done, then what happens, it just goes to reserves?
It just stays in general basic, yes.
And just as a reference, in all of the discussions, the amount was included in the reserve balances during the budget hearings, and it was assumed to be part of those balances that you all were considering during the budget hearings.
Okay. Yeah, I think it just needs to go back in reserves.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't think the motion's necessary.
Yeah, okay, I will rescind the motion then, I agree to that, yeah, we can stay in general reserves, general basic reserves.
As fun as it is to have two checking accounts, you can just have one.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then the last item that was discussed was to move, there is a courthouse foundation fund that has twelve thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. And that was discussed to be moved at that board meeting, and it never was, so I just am bringing it up now.
So this topic just came up because we have a biannual report with the secretary of state that's came due. And I was, just today was asking Shona to look into it because I, I can't recall if this foundation was eliminated. If there was a foundation meeting last year, if anybody remembers the February foundation meeting, what occurred? I haven't had time to look into those minutes to see if it was dissolved.
I, yeah, I thought we had a meeting in front of a supervisor meeting and terminated it.
Terminated, yeah.
We did.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I was thinking too, I just wanted the minutes to confirm that, so.
Where that was, I couldn't tell you, but I I remember doing that.
They would be separate minutes, then.
Yes, they would be, and I believe that auditor Gill at the time was the secretary of that meeting, I don't remember if I attended that one, it doesn't ring a bell. But I do remember the board conversations about it, and the tax I D had expired. And so in order to reactivate that tax I D, that's where that discussion kind of came about. that's where that discussion kind of came about. Um, I also know that there are individuals who have expressed that the foundation was beneficial in, uh, receiving some grants because it gives us a nonprofit status to be able to apply for those. So there are some people that I think maybe would like to talk to the board about maybe reactivating the foundation or doing something would, would give them that ability.
Now, didn't we, didn't we move, when we, in that meeting, when we dissolved, didn't we move the money, or didn't we make a motion?
I thought we did.
Didn't we, I, I can't remember. Remember, Michelle?
I don't remember, but honestly, if you want to table this one, until we do a little more research, we can see if there was a motion, and maybe it just wasn't done, so it can just be done.
Because we did it before the board meeting. So we did it at like four, four fifteen, and then we had our board meeting at four thirty. I remember that.
And I'm not certain, but I assume that the other entity would have recommended a transfer, but the county would have actually done it.
Right.
So, that's probably why it's, we either already did, or it's
Yeah.
just brought up from a previous agenda item.
Well, with that, I'll, I'll move to table it till we find out more information, so.
Second.
Alright, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson to table. All in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Oppose, say nay. Motion passes five.
Ken and Dave are down there thinking we just have meetings to have meetings in different groups.
Alright, well with that, thank you, Ryan, for bringing all that today. Thank you for that, for your diligence in that. Um, number thirteen's report on committee meetings.
I had a soil water conservation board meeting this morning. Uh, they were appreciative of the board, uh, budgeting their increase for their technician. We have about four hundred and sixty flood control structures in Woodbury County. Uh, those are paid into by, uh, the, the federal government and, and kind of watershed money to manage those, but over time, um, what these people have paid in, a lot of times, these are fifty-year easements, so what they paid in for what they thought maintenance costs were gonna be fifty years ago is not, you know, relative to where we're at today, and so they're appreciative because that technician does all that they can to keep these structures in shape. Um, I, I would have to estimate that you're probably looking at, you know, quarter of a million dollars a structure, or a hundred fifty thousand dollars a structure, so you take that times four hundred and sixty, it's a lot of, yeah. a lot of infrastructure in the county. And so we were talking about that, and, and actually come to find out that there is a special levy that the state has that counties can levy specifically for watersheds, and it's only levied on agricultural property where these, where these, uh, flood control devices are, and quite a few of the counties around us actually do levy that, we're one of the few that don't. And so, right now, the whole county kind of pays for that, uh, infrastructure. So it's something to think about, um, as we move forward, and we're wanting to keep these up. If they start to have, you know, deplete their funds, is it, is it better that the whole county pays for some of these structures that only a few people have? Or is it better for the areas that are specifically benefiting, actually paying for these, uh, structures? But otherwise, um, I think that's all I have to report, so, thanks, Dan.
Yep. Alright, anyone else? I had a board of Siouxland District Health meeting, um, nothing too crazy, other than, uh, well variance, and then just budget amendments, um, seen enough ticking grants, and then just user fees. Um, so there was just some positive revenue that came in there. Um, that was the big thing. Uh, and then the morning, um, I know there was the V C I C C meeting, I don't know, did you want to comment on that, Matthew, or did you have anything, anything?
I can do it. I can do it.
Yeah. Um, nothing major there. Other, the, the biggest thing was just the, uh, the governor signed the bill for the E nine-one-one, um, charging, uh, the, who's gonna pay for the increased, uh, maintenance in the, um, infrastructure for the, the E nine-nine-one? And, uh, what was signed into law seemed to potentially give a, um, an open checkbook or a, not a defined rate of, of charging, uh, that would, for devices for the nine-one-one system, and so that was, might be some concerns, but, um, other than that, John and his team are doing great at saving the county money, uh, and just getting projects done, upgrading PCs, and just, um, knocking out projects that been, you know, hardware and software, so, um, nothing, nothing major there.
Uh, there was also discussion of the twenty-eight E.
Oh, that's true. Thank you. I forgot about that, yep.
Um, in order to supervise the, the chief of information technology officer, uh, the county reps and the city reps are open to, uh, updated twenty-eight E to reflect that.
Yeah, that's right, thank you. Forgot about that, yep. Yep, so that's all I have. Anybody else in meetings? Okay. Alright.
Have you already had, um, any input from the attorney's office, or?
Not yet, we'll get to that, yeah. Yep. Alright, no, there are, uh, reports in committees. Alright, let's go to citizen concerns. Any citizens? Alright, seeing none, alright, we'll move on. Uh, board concerns. Uh, only one I have is hopefully by, uh, by next, by mid-July, I should have an update for the county morgue. So, for us about some properties, or a property, and so I'm working with Kenny, um, just to have some ideas there, so, just FYI, so. I think, um, we might have a resolution, um, to our situation, so that'll be very cost-effective for the county. Anyone else? Any other board concerns? Okay, alright, hearing none. We.